And KCCA Conference, Kansas County Commissioners Association.
I may go to that.
I was gonna go to that too.
That's at the end of uh.
May, it's uh end of April, sorry, April thirty and.
Yeah, end of April, month from now.
Injunction, which is a lot closer than the other ones.
Yeah, I may go to it. Have you been to that last year?
I did not, I've actually not gone to the, the uh, just the Commissioners one, which I think would be interesting. Um, we have a bill from Lincoln Park Manor for two hundred five dollars and forty six cents. I don't understand this coding here, but it's from Phoenix Supply Cadet Pro. Some kind of kit component for a tank, must be a toilet, and, oh, and a seat, yeah, that's what it is. We also have correspondence from Lincoln County Council on Aging. March twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen, Lincoln County Council on Aging Board would like to inform you that Charlene Watson resigned from our board at the last scheduled meeting on March twenty sixth. Due to health reasons, um, Jolene, Jody Webkey expressed interest in fulfilling the remainder of Charlene Watson's term ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty. County, County Council on Aging approved Jolene fulfilling her term. Attached are the letters from Charlene and Jolene. Uh, my understanding is they changed their bylaws so that we are no longer appointing their members. If that's true, uh, that means they're not subject to open records or open meetings potentially. So I think we might want to address that. And that doesn't ask for approval of their appointment. So we have two sets of minutes, we had our end of the month meeting and last Monday's meeting, so that'd be March twenty fifth and twenty eighth. So last Monday, we had a visit from the interim director from the ambulance service. We did evaluations with the county treasurer. We talked with Doug McKinney and Kelly Larson about the, um, grant proposal for the courthouse renovation, uh. Not renovations necessarily, but I'll just. Restoration, there you go, thank you, an R word, one of those. Um, we did not, uh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I see Michael gave us member the, uh, the, uh, evaluations, what are we gonna review them? Do we have to review them sometimes?
I think we set aside next week, didn't we?
Okay.
Because today we have, we have to make sure we're done at, by twelve thirty.
That's what I, I thought, so, okay, thank you, yeah.
Yep, um. Let's see, we talked about one twentieth road. We had a request from David Gersman to appoint a committee to assist the highway department for planning. And we were provided a, the, um, a binder with some road guidelines in it. County appraiser came and reported on evaluation changes. Uh, we had an executive session about the nursing home with Mr. Hay and County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare. And we approved the increase for six months of employment to Timothy Line. Yeah, that's at the bottom. We have a set aside time on April eighth to do highway department evaluations, which will be an executive session.
Okay.
The board agreed to, um, continue the ten o'clock meeting time at this time, maybe this time of year is typically when it changed, but we're going to continue at ten o'clock. Until we discuss it again, maybe harvest time. And we are going to have our Board of Health meeting on May sixth. At nine AM, which will start one hour before the commission meeting at ten. And we adjourned until the end of the month's meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from twenty, March twenty fifth. If no one sees any need for correction.
I still move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from March twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen. If there's no further discussion, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
None opposed, March twenty eighth. Um, we met to do accounts payable and payroll. We did decide that we would get a countertop built for the existing. What do you wanna call it, cupboard that is in the commission room we're going to move to. So we decided to accept the bid we got from Menards to do so, which was about unfortunately like a quarter of the price that we had sought locally. Um, we transferred money, ten thousand dollars from the general fund to the transportation bus, we transferred twenty nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two from the general fund to the county rescue squad. Made a motion to purchase the countertop, five hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents, and. We had an executive session to discuss the EMS department employees before we had continued on to, um, have our interviews for the day. We moved to change the status of the emergency management vehicle from a public safety officer vehicle to a taxable fringe benefit. According to the information we had seen on the federal standards. And we approved payroll in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. And then accounts payable in the amount of four hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. We then performed two interviews. And I don't see any corrections. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Okay.
It's been motion and seconded to approve the March twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen, end of the month minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. And that concludes our correspondence and minutes. I guess at this time, you, you would be Nikki?
Yeah, I'm Kim, I'm the director. Nikki probably called to schedule.
Okay, hi, Kim.
Hi.
In your name, sir.
John Gushaw.
John, nice to have you here, please join us.
Um, I'm, uh, the executive director at NCK CASA in Hope's Place Child Advocacy Center. And we, um, serve the twelfth judicial district that's including Lincoln County, and we've been, um, here since nineteen ninety-four. We are celebrating our twenty-fifth year advocating for children in our communities. And NCK CASA has served over four hundred and fifty children since we opened our doors. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, five out of the six counties in our judicial district filed a hundred and twenty-two seat cases, child needed care cases. Right now, we have seventeen active volunteers, ten are working cases, and we are serving twenty-three children in our district. A CASA is sometimes the only consistent adult in a child's life. They count on them to be the voice of the court. A CASA will stay with the child throughout their case, which could take anywhere from six months, and the longest that CASA, NCK CASA has had was ten years. Uh, CASA becomes a very important, um, part of their CASA child's life. NCK CASA's in Hope's Place Advocacy Center is requesting the Commissioners to sign a proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lincoln County. We, if we could, we'd also like to put a few signs and some pinwheels out in the courtyard. And we want to thank you guys for your time. And I have a volunteer with me, which, um, said his name's John, shut up, would you want to say anything?
Well, the question came up in Mitchell County, do we, do we actually have these kids with us? No, we don't, they're in foster care. And then we, we meet, we develop a relationship with the kids that's hopefully, uh, provides them some security as they're in strange places and sometimes getting moved and so forth. So I have three of those, thirteen, is that what you said?
Twenty-three.
And, uh, and they're split up, uh, one's in one town, one, two in the other, and, uh. So I, I go see one of them once a week and the other every two weeks, and cause they're farther away. And then we, we do, uh, speak for them in court, so to speak, we, uh, it depends on the county, but in Mike, in the case that I have. By prior to court, by all the attorneys, and Kim will be there, I'll be there, uh, the social workers will be there, and we'll, we'll discuss what we thinks best for the, the child and, and, uh, then present that in court. Technically, we speak for the kid, uh, but we, the, the big benefit in my case is the little child that's by himself. He is really struggled, and, uh, so we have, you know, I've really had, um, we go have pizza once a week, go to the park and play and ride, learn to ride a bicycle. Learn to play catch and things like that, you know, that maybe a grandfather would, and so it's a awful good case, a cause. And Randy, you live out east, south of?
South on fourteen.
South, okay, that is, I was thinking there was a, when I was down here, there was a Loman out east.
That's my cat, a Berman Loman, he, he lives on eighteen, about two miles east, I live about four miles south on fourteen.
Okay.
Now, where are you guys at, at Boyd?
No, our office is in Concordia, but, yeah, but we serve the whole twelfth judicial district.
And I'm out of Boyd.
And you get some funding from somewhere?
Um, I have to do about a hundred thousand dollars worth of grant writing, uh, funding to keep us going. Um, the Commissioners, uh, the counties do, um, so much money to us, so Lincoln County is part of that, that gives us a, a little bit of money to keep us, um, going as well. But yeah, we, all of our fundraisers and everything, the reason we do so many is because we need supplement and keep, otherwise, if we don't have that funding, we can't advocate for children in our community.
The volunteers aren't paid.
No.
We do get reimbursed on mileage, but not at horse.
I did have a question. What kind of relationship is allowed to be established between the CASA volunteer and the foster parents?
Oh, the CASA volunteer and the foster parents? Yeah, they're allowed to, um, get information from the foster parents and talk to them, um, uh, there's not, like, we can't just give information to them, but we, we, um, work. The same goal, I mean, we wanna make sure that the child is, you know, being taken care of and stuff, but they communicate all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they check on the child, see what's going on, or when they have activities, or, um, things like that, and they're in their home quite a bit, so.
Yeah, and, um, even the single mother in this case, uh, you know, as sad as all this is, she's developed, I mean, she's welcomed me into her home. But the foster parents, shall I, I need to call here today and set up meetings for this week.
Now, do you go to court with them and stuff like that too? How do you, but they have, if there's a real legal issue, there's gotta be some attorney too.
Well, they have a guardian alightum, every scene case, the child has guardian alightum, but the, the thing with the system is, most of the times, the, the guardian alightum has never met the child. So they're just going off of paperwork. And what a CASA does is they, uh, become bonded with the child, they get to know the child, they talk to the child, they meet with them once a month at least. And so they actually know about the child, so they can bring back, and we can get more information than social workers, um, can, so we have a more well-rounded, um, aspect on what's going on in the case. So we, that's what the CASA brings, is that relationship that the GAL just doesn't have time to do.
You know, I'll communicate with the schools, with the therapists, with the court, uh, with, in this case, there's a probation involved, so.
But if, now, if the child leaves the community, then you're just, that's just it, you're out of.
No, we follow them.
They, we stay with them until their state case is closed, they're adopted, or they're, um, reunified back into the home. So no matter, that's why sometimes our case lasts up to ten years.
You're kinda like a big brother or something for them, that's what I feel, go ahead.
I had one more question. So does your organization perform any sort of statistical analysis on timelines, timeframes, or scenarios as far as the process is concerned?
There, there's no way for, I mean, every year, we have to give stats to nationals, state, all across the board because of our funding, we have to give multiple stats. The problem is, I can't give you a timeframe, like, uh, literally, a case can take six months, or it could take up to ten years if that child's gonna age out, there's no way for me to be able to tell you. In his case, it could have been done, uh, a couple of months ago, but things had happened, so then now we're back to the drawing board.
I know, well, yes, and I, and I understand what you're saying, there is no way to, to, to say that how it should be or could be, I'm just saying.
I can give you last year's.
Of your four hundred and fifty, of your four hundred and fifty total.
I cannot give you from four hundred and fifty, but I can give you like every year. I could say, um, like, this aged, like, the zero to two years, how long they were in the system.
Right, and whether, whether rights were terminated or something like that, like that kind of.
Yeah, we do that all the time.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Uh, well, but I am a court appointed advocate for Selene County.
Oh, hi.
Well, thank you.
And I highly, thank the program's wonderful, when I lived in Arizona, I was an instructor. The program comes out with Mexico, and, uh, it's really, uh, popular in most places, and sometimes it's the only, only person, if it goes to court, that does have the child's interests in mind.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to.
I would so move.
Sign the proclamation.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the Child Abuse Prevention Month pro- proclamation, two thousand and nineteen, for the month of April. There's no further discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed.
And then I will get a copy upstairs and leave it for you guys.
And yes, it is okay for you to put your stuff in the yard.
Okay, thanks.
No, it's left over from last year.
Oh, yeah, we leave them every, yeah, usually the Commissioners just have one. Thank you so much, you guys have a good day.
Thank you.
I think I forgot last night, but thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume this is your child?
It is.
Well behaved.
Aw, well, thank you. Would you like to move on early, or would you like to take a recess before we continue, cause their appointments are now ahead?
No, I just, I think these guys, these guys are ready to take, cause they probably have other things they wanna do.
Okay, so.
They want to see your lovely town, it's a beautiful day.
On the agenda?
I do think Glenn Stegman is planning to be here.
Okay.
That's the only person who I, I understand.
Okay, then I will recess us for ten minutes, and we'll come back to the table then.
May I, may I distribute some of the materials that we'll be reviewing?
And I was upstairs, so, um, Michael has called and said that he won't be able to be here. And, um, Jennifer is not going to be able to be here either, she had an emergency, but she has to deal with, so. Kinda clear of sub the agenda a lot, so.
You guys will get, get, go home early also.
So is Rhonda coming down, or, cause I guess I didn't look clearly, she's actually next.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's fine, then, we'll.
Oh, you broke the quiet. I'm just joking.
Hey, is it fine if I take your picture real quick for Facebook, cause then I'll tell them, okay, cause then I just say that you guys.
Sure.
Awesome, thank you guys.
You guys want a picture of you?
I'll be giving you some this time. And I have one more thing that I'll give you at my presentation. Well, you were knocked out, for sure. Good, I'm not, thank you. Of course. Give it to you, she'll have, she'll keep it, so, thank you. We'll take that back and give it to. Give it to Sharon.
I'm saving a stamp.
Oh, okay, all right.
It would take ten days to prepare a meal to death. Well, it's how long it takes.
I'll take it back, I know, keep going up.
We just buy these forever seeds and then forget how much they cost.
Yeah. It's a pretty good gift, you know, it is a gift.
So, I think we had two increases.
There you go, you were, you were really prepared.
Postal service, so, you know, I've always been a huge fan.
You know, cause it's really sort of miraculous, what I was younger, girl. Put this letter in my book, my box, and it can go. And it went in the world, that was my, still is, but. Really? So, so I'm a fan of yours.
In California.
Where in California?
Um, out of Fallbrook, which is between, about twenty-five miles inland between Los Angeles and San Diego. On the backside of Kent County. I'm gonna clear up to Riverside. But you know, sometimes we were the only one up there. People sing, and then, oh, I have some adventures to tell you about animals. Oh, I go out and I jump in front of my teeth and run for about half mile. If I break that, they're gonna have a fight, and I ain't going. I had whole chicken.
A bowl?
A bowl, yeah. You're promising to be mad at, mad at him, yes, I guess he like to take grape. He was purple like a grape, so they call it the grape.
I just saw that on Facebook this weekend, somebody had. So he was lifting, running to that car, cause he was mad, and he was lifting, and it, that reminds me of a dude saying that.
Well, we wondered, she found out, they had traveled over, and went all down for my wife. And this bull and five cows, I says, I know the difference, I know it's a cow, yes, I'm from Iowa. They had a ranch at Ford, Maple Rapids, and that one night, the fence was, so we got this bird check, and they'll say, you can't get on my way.
Were you gonna be able to get the field as well?
Well, we were looking at it till Saturday, Friday night, was it, Friday night, got snow, rain.
Yeah, I had crop service Friday, when was it?
I said, they left some tracks on the farm yesterday.
They fertilized my field, and right there by that little creek, they got stock, I should have told them, that's a swampy little area. That's, yeah, they called me and apologized, I said, oh, well, it's, they do. I'd like, I'm glad I fertilized it, cause now we got that rain on it, so, cause I don't know, we never got out there, but, of course, it's been drying that way.
We got our fertilizer, I'm gonna spray some weed for you, right? We're just getting ready to spray.
We put on finesse, yeah.
Most of it.
That finesse still works pretty good, that mustard. I didn't get around to doing that, I should have had, I, I should have had crop service do liquid fertilizer and finesse at the same time.
Yeah.
I wasn't thinking, I just had it put on dry.
It was one of the black smokes, but I don't think.
Yeah.
Our neighbors flat it here, that's.
Really?
It was on, well, they'd had feed, they'd had feed on the ground, and it flopped it off last fall and bailed it up. So, yeah, they had never had any cattle out.
Yeah, some harder ground that would.
So they got theirs right, and we've had cattle out, and most of all, we want to model stocks, and it's the way, it needs discs basically to get it leveled out.
I needed discs on my stuff, well, maybe next, maybe to dry up enough, here we go.
Yeah, I thought that, the way it was going, I thought maybe we would be drying it. Got fence to fix.
Yeah.
Trees to push out.
It'll be long for cattle. Yeah, it's getting busy now. Ooh.
Are we kicking you out?
Yeah, I can take my nap. I'll take a nap, you come back in about an hour, right?
That's how I feel, I did all my mom's yard yesterday and I haven't raked for a year.
Yeah.
So, I winded a lot all last night.
Yeah, and I see the grass has started to grow, so I guess I better get the lawnmower tuned up here, huh? Because it won't be long before we mow in grass. What?
Hopefully no more snow.
About six inches on Easter.
On Easter.
We had a couple inches Saturday, we played center.
We had a dusting here, we had a little bit. It got cold though, it got like twenty degrees though.
Super cold. And it froze again yesterday morning. Well, I don't know, I don't even have potatoes out in the ground, we can't get our garden work or anything yet.
I remember nineteen sixty-six, this storm here. My aunt was killed in Emporia and come from Denver with the blast cart to go through on Interstate seventy.
Before they closed it?
Yes.
Wow.
It. Oh, it was horrible.
It is Kansas.
Yeah. That was April eighteenth.
So.
Yes, it could happen.
You already done cabin?
Oh, I know, I don't think it's quite done, but it's getting pretty.
Did it do pretty good?
Yeah.
You did lose too much?
I don't think he did.
Well, that's good.
Max takes care of all that.
Max handled it.
All that, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Didn't the buds start coming?
Tough luck there at the start. I think after that, I had career, so that's a plan.
Oh, really? Because man, we had some mean weather there, the wind and the cold and the rain and ice.
Yeah, I think we got along. Supposed to have more backwards or something wrong though, once he lost it.
Sounds like the brassers lost him like a million heads.
Yeah.
They really caught her.
Maybe, maybe that'll tell.
So, just maybe if you have an answer for that.
We got Rhonda here.
And I called Friday, so, I called me as a parent. They transferred meat to someone and I said, fine, they told me, yes, it's there. The lady was up there. You don't know, if you have to get your family meat services, kind of services. And she said, they just called me, I said, where is it posted? Where do we go, uh, to your name, kind of a house?
Oh, for case management.
It was, no, if we close this. Well, do we get it now or do we call?
Oh, I see. Because you've always had a county authority.
Yeah, so now if you have a local town.
But they can call North Central Flint Hills. They can call North Central Flint Hills, his eye goug, where they need to call whatever service it is. Sometimes the extensions.
Like when my in-laws were going to move here, I called Teresa, this was like right years ago, six years ago. She gave me all the records. Saying, okay, transportation's all here. It's really neat, probably doesn't ever. Tried to give out, but I couldn't ever give them in the Hunter, which is a little town down in the border. Yeah.
Rhonda, if you're ready, I believe we can move forward with the agenda. It's on evaluation, so, is that a session? Oh, yes, yes. Um, just one, correct?
Just one, two minutes.
Okay, five minutes will do it?
Oh, at least, I mean, we won't need that long.
Okay, Dawn, are you ready? I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing the Appraisers Department evaluation. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the basement meeting room of the courthouse with the commission, the acting HR, which would be Dawn and the appraiser.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to enter into executive session, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye. Aye, none opposed. She's not employee of the county? She's still employed with employee benefits and... Well, it's a contract to guarantee employment, that's not contracted. A contract would be ten ninety-nine wages, she's a W-two employee. You don't get a contract pay, do you? No, you're an employee.
I get, yeah, regular, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how that, I mean, I don't know how you...
I mean, you get employee benefits and you get employee paycheck. Yeah, you're not contracted, you just sign a contract because they guaranteed to employ you for a certain amount of time.
Yeah, because the state requires that.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not contract labor. Um, I would say we need to set aside probably time, let's see. I would say the fifteen. That's not a holiday, is it? It's the next week, it's a holiday. You're going to have them next week? Oh, yeah, would you mind coming back down? And because you're right, we have, we have an open agenda now that we have some cancellations, so would you mind coming back, let's say? We have ten forty-five to eleven, he's not going to be here, maybe eleven fifteen? That's a good idea, thank you.
Well, do you guys, you guys did the ones before and then...
We need to do it first, before she comes.
So, do you want to do...
It shouldn't take more than fifteen minutes, should it? We have eleven forty-five to... Or, I'm sorry, ten forty-five to eleven is our next appointment, which is coming up. And then we'll have eleven to eleven fifteen, and then if she comes at eleven fifteen, we can do an, well, that'll be an additional executive session. Would that be okay? All right, thank you. Would you mind getting us the paperwork, Dawn, that we need? Okay, I believe we can go ahead. On the, on the agenda, we have Julie Walters and Rose Landis from North Central Flint Hills.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know, I think I've met all of you before, I'm Julia Gobert-Walter.
Aljo Wallace.
Aljo.
I'm out.
Randy Lohmer.
Let's meet you. Alexis, yes. You've got your hands full. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for making time on your agenda to talk about the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. I know that there have been questions about the programs and services that we've been delivering to Lincoln County. And what I provided to you are a couple documents. The first is the fact sheet for Lincoln County, this is for two thousand eighteen. And basically delineates the different programs and services that we've been providing here in Lincoln County. As you probably know, our offices are based in Manhattan, we have another office in Salina, wanting Emporia. And we serve eighteen counties, so we're, we've got a lot of things going on. But we are really appreciative of the work that happens here in Lincoln County. We know that there've been a lot, there's been a lot of transition in the last year and a half. And I want to also recognize our board members who are here. We have Glenn Stegman, who is on our Board of Directors, and Cynthia Nelson, who's on our Board of Directors. And she's also the more, the most recently appointed silver-haired legislator from our county, so, or from Lincoln County. And also with us is Judy Alvers, who is the Chair of the County Council on Aging here in Lincoln County. And I know Bob Lovelace is a member of the County Council on Aging, anyone else that I'm forgetting? Okay. Our vice chair is here also, the County Council on Aging. And of course, Rose Landis is here. And she's been attending the County Councils on Aging meetings and very faithfully for the last several, several months, actually, probably over several years. So, what you have in your fact sheet, I'm just going to go over it very, very quickly, because I know time is limited. But in your county, right around twenty-seven percent of your total population age sixty-plus is over age sixty-plus, that's eight hundred and eighty-two people. You also have about thirty percent of those people who are living alone here in the county. And about ten percent of the sixty-plus population have incomes below the federal poverty level. So, that gives you a picture of, of the seniors in your county. You can see in the next box, the different funding requests that our agencies made to Lincoln County. And in two thousand nineteen, we essentially were asking for right around two thousand dollars of money to go. That, that, eight hundred ninety-seven of that was for the Senior Care Act. And another twelve ninety-five was for administrative funds. We also, I'm sure you're familiar with your assessed valuation, and congratulations, your assessed valuation's going up, very good. The bottom line here, in terms of estimated economic impact, is the amount of federal funds that come to your county. Our auditors tell us that a seven multiplier goes into federal funds that are in a county. Are, and you are, we're showing the economic impact of the services and funds that come to your county totals right at eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, for two thousand dollar investment, I think you're getting a pretty good return if you look, look at the multiplier. But even if you don't look at the multiplier, you can look at the grand total of dollars invested in aging services in your county, and that totals a hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. And again, you can see where those services added up. And that's pretty significant. And that's absolute, that's where the multiplier, the base of the multiplier comes from, by the way.
This doesn't necessarily calculate, though, how much of these funds are generated by our local income or, or income tax or sales tax?
These are, these are just services that our agency provides in your county that we, you know, we...
I guess I'm going back to page one, when you said it's a two thousand dollar investment for a return of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twelve. But that's not taking into account the investment that each person has made with their income tax.
No, no.
That then gets refunded back to the county, right?
But I'm just looking, we're just looking at it as a total of...
Of what this board gives.
Our agency, it's what, it's what North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, based in Manhattan, Kansas, provides in services. And the multiplier effect of that, those dollars here in your county.
But when you say the two thousand dollars, that's just what is given from our property tax by the commission, basically? That's not including anything that all the people pay in when they pay in their income tax every year and all that?
No, it's basically, that two thousand dollar that you, that you paid in two thousand eighteen is what your singular investment...
Dred county money paid.
Yes, to our agency.
Not money that we pay individually to state and federally.
Yes.
That's what she said.
Right, yeah, right.
Well, yeah, we know that.
You guys, you guys...
A lot of people don't understand that, though, so I just wanted to point that out.
Well, there's all kinds of taxes, some are different, others are...
There are, there are.
How do they get this, seven times multiplier?
Well...
That seems a little high, because, I mean, I'm not against that, it's just...
Yeah, I get it.
Eight hundred thousand dollars worth of...
Right.
I mean, I, I guess you could say the people stay here because we have the services, and when they stay here, they're going to spend more money, which stays here and multiplies, is that the idea?
Yes, and this is, and remember, most of the dollars that our agency has are federal dollars. And when our auditors, and they just made their presentation like, oh, I guess it was middle of March, so about three weeks ago. They said, you, you, they use a seven multiplier for federal dollars because of a federal program that, yes. And that's economic impact, so. But, but if you talk to your local Chamber of Commerce and ask them what multiplier they use, they'd probably say more like five, but still, it's pretty significant.
Yeah, I was always curious where they come up with that number.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'm not, it's not, no big deal.
It's, 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 it's cool to ask questions. So, and then a lot of times, people want to know what we're doing with the congregate and home-delivered meals. And you can see that we have the Lincoln Senior Center providing these meals here in Lincoln County. And you can get a picture of what, the number of meals that were provided, and the value of those meals in terms of what were provided. So, you can see that in fiscal year two thousand eighteen, fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine meals were provided. The value of those is seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four, and it's broken down between home-delivered and congregate. And of course, the congregate meals are, you know, are the dining center meals, okay? Those are when people come to the dining center and eat. Or I think it can also include some people that come to and get takeout meals and they're considered congregate. But the home-delivered meals are people who are, that are getting delivered by home...
So, from the donations that are collected on site, or at any point in time, for the Friendship Meals Program, is a check issued to you from the Lincoln Senior Center?
No, the way this program works in our eighteen counties, with a couple exceptions, but I'm just going to say generally, the way it works, is that those dollars are considered participant contributions. They're collected in an anonymous way at the senior center and then deposited to be counted by, I'll give you the rules. Counted by two unrelated meal volunteers and deposited daily in a bank account that's set up.
Or within North Central.
Yes.
So, do you have that number for what the deposit was for any given year?
I can get that. No worries, but, you know, that go, that is part of the, of the federal, those are considered federal dollars because of this being a federal program and...
So, you have to take whatever deposit was given to you and pass it back to...
Well, it goes, it goes to pay Rose's time, it goes to pay for...
I'm just wondering if you, if you have a total of seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars spent on meals in Lincoln County?
That's correct.
How much money did you recuperate from Lincoln County?
We can find that out. I don't, it's not, it's not mentioned here.
Yeah.
But, Rose, do you have any ballpark figures on that?
I don't.
Okay, we can get that for you. But essentially, because this is a federal program, it's of course considered...
But they do pay, some people pay for them.
It's a vol, it's a voluntary participant contribution. There's, there's a suggested contribution of...
Three dollars.
Three dollars, three fifty right now, I think. And the full cost of the meal in two thousand eighteen was five dollars and twenty-five cents. So, if somebody was going to go over and say, hey, I just want to buy the meal today, I don't want to fill out this paperwork, because that's another thing, we have rules that have, people have to be...
We have, some people come here, just, not seniors, just get them there and pay that five.
And we encourage that, because that, that, that it all helps get the program going and thriving.
I guess I'm saying if, if you collected three fifty potentially per meal at fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine meals, that would be an income for you of fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-one fifty. So, then the actual payout from North Central Flint Hills would be more like twenty-seven thousand, not seventy-seven thousand.
But let me just say that not everybody could... But let me just say that not everybody contributes...
That's fine, I just wanted to know what that number is because that changes what the, if you're saying the output from North Central Flint Hills is seventy-seven thousand, it may very well be more like thirty thousand or forty.
It's all considered federal money, Alexis. So, so once that contribution is made, it's considered federal money. But we can give you the breakdown.
But you, but you collect it into your organization, though. And whether, whether it's federal money or not, after it's been collected, it still goes into your organization. I'm not saying that you're not footing the difference in the meal program. But it's more like maybe thirty, forty thousand, not seventy-seven? We don't know, 'cause you haven't really reported the deposit amount?
It's all considered federal money. Once, once those donations are made, the auditors and everyone considers it federal money because of the nature of the program. But we can give you the breakdown, no worries.
I have a good question with these, you have some case management, I see different charges here. What, what, what does case management mean here? I don't know what all this is.
Yeah, and that's fine. Uh, our agency has professional, uh, social workers. Actually, we have had nurses, and we do have a nurse right now, who goes to people's homes. And when, uh, when somebody calls us and tells us that, hey, somebody's struggling, senior or a family member might be calling us and saying, hey, we gotta, we're thinking about sending mom or dad to a nursing home. Uh, can you come out and, and tell us about the Senior Care Act? Can you come out and tell us about some of the other services?
They're kinda like advisors, but they're like professional advisors.
Yes, and, and...
Maybe, maybe a nurse or a, or a professional, uh, person.
Absolutely. And what those people have, uh, they have authority, they know what programs are available. They can tell the individual...
They can assist on the procedures you would need to do all this stuff.
That's right. But they can also connect people to different programs and services that are available, either through our agency or through community. And the goal of this program, and essentially the goal of our organization, is to help seniors and family caregivers and to stay independent, away from the doorways of institutions, hospitals, nursing homes, for as long as possible so that they can continue, and that's, we don't say this, but basically, anytime we're able to help provide services at home, it's helping people be where they wanna be, and it's helping them stay in the community where they can continue to pay the property taxes and...
Yeah, I think it's good, I just wanted a definition of what, what that was.
Absolutely. And actually, the def, there are definitions, there are more, you know, there's sort of...
Well, you have them there, I guess, don't you?
Yeah, we do. But I'm happy to explain further, no worries.
No, that's true.
Uh, my question is, if you, any, all of these services that you have listed, which there are over a dozen or so, assessments and counseling and homemaking care and home health services and respite services and case management, da-da-da, all of these things, if a local person was to call in to access this information and get services by your organization, where do you send them out? Salina, it, for Lincoln County?
The case manager, the case manager would come from Salina.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, in our county, have access to any of this through North Central Flint Hills, directly through Salina?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And if some person didn't know where to go for this, would they get, contact Becky in the Brappin now that she's running as the director?
They might contact Becky if they were with the, um, I mean, more likely if they were connected with the meals program at the Lincoln Senior Center.
Right. How would they get a hold of these case management people, is what I'm wondering?
Well, we have an eight-hundred number. Well, partly the way we, and this might be something we can talk about. Keynotes, is our publication, we send it out to more than forty thousand households. Not quite forty thousand now, but we are happy to add people to our, this mailing list. So that's one, one way. I know in, in the past, I'm, uh, the county coordinator took names and made referrals to us. Uh, we try to make, I mean, you've got a copy of our brochure, uh, brochures are available. And, um, so those are some of the ways.
Okay, I was just curious how they, how they had access to it.
I believe recently, um, the Sylvan Senior Center, Sylvan Senior Center had contacted, uh, the organization, and then you guys actually sent a Schick person to come to the center, and then they scheduled appointments and saw multiple people.
Yes, that was, that was during our Schick enrollment or Medicare enrollment season, which...
So you'll actually send people on-site, whether it's to the senior center, or do they go to people's homes?
Well, let me just say this. Our case managers are, are, are the social workers or the nurses, they're the professionals that will do this. They go into the, in home, they go in the person's home and talk to them and talk to the caregiver, find out what's needed, and, and if we can help, they will refer or create a plan of care. The Senior Health Insurance Counseling Program, which is, helps people navigate through Medicare, um, we rely on volunteers. We rely on volunteers or community partners to take the training. And then when we do, and we do events, Schick enrollment events throughout our region during Schick enrollment season, and then during that time, we want that volunteer and a bunch of others, as well as our staff, to come to a place and we will help people enroll. But we also know that there's a need for volunteers in communities to be there to help answer people's questions. They can always call Manhattan, we're happy to help. But, um, we all, we also realize that, you know, we, we can't be here all the time, and so we...
Is the training free?
The training is free of charge, yes, for Schick.
Mm-huh. That's nice.
Yeah. And I just wanna also let you know that we are considered, our agency's considered, uh, the leader in Medicare benefits counseling in rural Kansas in the state. Now, there's one other group on Wichita, they do a lot more sessions, et cetera. But we are considered, you know, the premier place for training and leadership in terms of getting the word out about Medicare benefits counseling. But I will also say, we are always in need of volunteers. In fact, right now, in the next month or so, we need people to call us and say, hey, I wanna be a Schick volunteer. Okay? And let's see, what else can we talk about? Oh, I just wanna mention that we do pay, or did pay in two thousand eighteen, and it's gonna probably be the same in two thousand nineteen or close to it, uh, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars in wages, uh, from the Friendship Meals Program. So that's, that's in addition to the dollars that we, 'cause we're paying for the food and we're paying for...
That's just wages, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and that, and that doesn't count the wages from Rose or the people in the Manhattan office.
Administrative.
Okay?
With people on-site.
That's correct. Okay? So that takes care of the fact sheet. Do you have any questions, other questions? 'Cause I know you've listed more than... I'm happy, happy to explain further. The other, another document I gave you, and I also gave Judy and our board members, is our official request for funds for two thousand and twenty. You'll see that in two thousand and twenty, our request for fund is two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. You might wanna round it to two thousand, two hundred and sixty, uh, just for the sake. But if you wanna send, if you wanna give us exact, that's great. Anyway, this is our request for, uh, two thousand and twenty, and it does reflect a sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cent increase because there was a, an increased use of Senior Care Act services in two thousand nine, nineteen? I'm trying, yeah, two thousand and nineteen, get these years mixed up. And the formula is based on a base plus a usage formula, based on all of our eighteen counties. So that's what, that's why you see change up and down.
So it's not calculated per county? It's your, you have a base fee and then a usage...
Base, yeah.
Um, calculation for the county on top of the base fee?
That's correct, that's correct.
So really, our utilization is fairly low, is what you're saying?
I, I am saying that. I am saying, and I believe that, that more could be, could be utilized. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, but...
No, but I see what you're saying. What is the base fee? I mean, let's...
Eight hundred dollars a year.
Okay, so everything above the eight hundred is what you're basing our utilization in our county on for the remainder of what we're putting in?
And it's not, and it's not much.
No, it's not.
So, and, and I can't...
But all these things are available consistently?
I can't, I can't provide the answer as to why you're not more fully utilizing...
Is Lincoln County one of the lowest in the eighteen?
Yes.
Interesting, that's very interesting.
Yes, it is. So, and, and, so I just wanna say that. I think the other thing to notice, and I wanna point this out, although, uh, we do have a housing assistance program.
I saw that, Section Eight, yeah.
And this program will help people, and it don't have to be sixty and over, by the way. They can help people of any age looking for subsidized rental assistance. And, uh, that's also not...
So they don't have to be seniors, that, that program's just orchestrated through your organization?
Right, that's right.
That's, I didn't, I've never heard that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and when we took on the program, the folks at HUD said, both, our focus was to be helping people in rural areas of Kansas. So, you know, I'm guessing there's probably some people that can take advantage of that. We do have a waiting list now, but we always encourage people to get on that waiting list because if they don't get it on waiting list, it's like, well, it's like buying a ticket to win Powerball. You won't ever...
It's always down the road, then, yeah.
But, but we do encourage that, so I just wanted to point that out. Okay, so that's that. Um, I've given you a copy of Keynotes, I've given you a copy of the brochure. And there's one other thing I wanted to tell you about because this is happening April nineteenth. Uh, we have a healthcare decisions day, uh, where we're bringing, uh, our legal expert on durable powers of attorney and living wills. And they're going to be in Silver Grove on the nineteenth of April. I think I've got copies right now. We will be sending this out to all media in this part of the state. But, uh, I just wanna say that Paul Ship, who is our, with Flint Hills Legal Services, is a wonderful presenter. And let me also say that powers of attorney, living wills, those, uh, healthcare decisions that everybody needs, when, especially as we get a little older in our timeframe, very important documents. And we know a lot of people don't have them. And whether you're planning to be at home or whether you're gonna live in a nursing home, you need them. So, uh, we hope that we'll see a lot of folks come out to, uh, Sylvan for, to hear Paul Ship's presentation. Lunch will be available, you do need to call us and tell us that you're coming. Uh, and we also are scheduling one-on-one appointments with people to get this legal work done on-site, which we, we know to be very helpful, useful. Or if you don't, if you've already got a power of attorney, you already got a living will, but you have questions, or it's been a long time since you looked at it, Paul Ship and other attorneys, if we have need, will come, be there, and review those documents with you, so...
And that's for free?
That's free, we always accept contributions.
That's amazing.
But we are able to do this, and I, I wanted to say now, uh, the Older Americans Act, the Federal Older Americans Act makes this possible. And by the way, uh, our friends and leaders in Washington are looking at the Older Americans Act right now in terms of their funding, funding allocations. I would, if you have connections to Senator Moran, Senator Roberts, or Congressman Marshall, please ask them to make sure that the Older Americans Act funding is safe and that, if possible, to increase because the needs are there. You know them well in this county.
Well, thank you.
Are there any other questions that any of you have?
No, I think this was very thorough. I appreciate all the information, that's good experience.
And I appreciate the opportunity to come and, and be with you today. I also wanna express my appreciation to the County Council on Aging for the work that they do. I wanna express my appreciation once again to Glenn and to Cynthia for their service on our Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. And I'd be happy to come again, just let me know if you have questions, or call me.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Stayed in travel, too?
Yes. I love seeing babies, so, thank you.
When do we need, we'll address that now or later?
For the budget, for the budget.
When do we do the budget, in summer?
We need to start working on it in May so that we can be ready in June.
June is when you approve it.
Uh, I think, is it Ask Aljo, is it by the first of July? When do we do our budget, our preliminary budget approval?
Till August.
Not till August, okay.
I was just curious when the funding comes. Yeah, okay. Uh, Don sent it in, did you go? Okay.
Okay, so I suppose we need to see more of the evaluation.
Gonna do, uh...
Evaluation.
Evaluation of, uh, lined up again, or whatever. Well, I think it'll break, I better, the little boy's over there.
Thank you for coming.
Me, too.
Really, how are you doing?
That's fine, I guess then we have plenty of time. I, maybe I should come on and meet a picture.
Excuse me.
Mark, we're, we're basically done. We're going to the big conversation. Did you call Don?
No, I didn't, thank you.
Say something to Alexis and ask her if she wants to, if you have something to say here.
Yeah, probably even just have five minutes. I probably do that in, in five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mark.
What'd you do?
Just tell him to call him.
Yeah, we're gonna do it right now, we'll do it right now.
Okay. You should write in the first letter, will you?
Excuse me, Aljo. Paper, paper, more paper.
Moving into it.
Yeah, all right.
She's good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least, yeah, at least, you know, you have some business before you start, so, you know?
Have you ever gone to those conferences, Aljo?
I went to the, this, this one in May, April, uh... Whether I went once or twice. Once I was supposed to, uh, use, or I was going, and then we had a death in the family, so I cut my time short.
Oh.
It was okay, it was...
I guess I'll do it, I...
Yeah, it's, it's nice, you get to meet some commissioners from other, here, some of their problems that they have.
I went to the one in Topeka, you know?
Yeah.
And that was pretty good, and, you know?
Yeah.
Showing you what's going on, kind of, like you say, you meet the other people from other counties, you kinda talk to them, what's going on there.
Yeah. Perhaps, perhaps he's making way more money while I'm making, been going, he's headed for Florida next week, and first of May, he goes to Mexico City, and, and...
And also, it's time for them to go to their nation, too.
Yeah.
It's always the flexibility of, you know, to say, having a much easier... ...
Yeah.
Well, it's getting nice outside.
Yep.
We could read from Wallace's farmer.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're going to amend the agenda. All right, so we no longer have Michael or Jennifer on the schedule. And I told Rhonda we would contact her in just a bit, so you would like?
A few minutes.
Okay. Yep, I think we're ready for you.
Okay, so I've talked to each, I'm here to, obviously to represent the EMS. I think I can, most all, in general, I can represent everyone on, on the EMS. I'm one of, obviously, one of the senior members of the department. All that doesn't make me the smartest, or the most qualified, but I am one of the old guys. I mean, I've got pretty near forty years of firing EMS. I, I, I just wanted, as a taxpayer and a member of the EMS, I wanted to make, I want to make very, very certain that you folks, on your interview process, that number one, you hire somebody that's a good quality person. Number two, that has, obviously, the skills, the qualifications, the training, that can be a good leader for us. And probably maybe even most importantly, is someone that the crew can respect and, and follow their lead. And, because I'm afraid if that doesn't happen, we're gonna lose some people. And EMS personnel are scarce as hand's teeth in, in counties in western Kansas anymore. Every county in western Kansas, I mean, almost every county, is, is suffering from low numbers, people getting out and not getting, young people not getting in. There's a couple reasons for that. A lot of it is, is the commitment that it is. I mean, it takes a lot of training. The state is constantly forcing more qualifications upon us, more training. So it is a commitment. And, so, you know, if we lose people, they're gonna be really hard to replace. And part of that being, I'm sure you're all aware of, we're an ALS, an ALS certified service. Okay, if we lose several of our advanced life support, ALS meaning advanced life support, BLS, is basic life support. If we lose some ALS people, and we can't replace them right away, we're gonna be back to a BLS service because you're not gonna have the, the people to cover twenty-four hours a day in an ALS setting. So we're gonna be back to a basic life support, EMT, which was, that's what I am. I'm, I'm basic, okay? I did have, one time had a higher qualification and they changed, they dropped that qualification. And I chose not to take the extra training to bump up to an even higher one. But anyways, so we're gonna lose some, I'm afraid, if we're not careful about who we hire, that we're gonna lose some people. And I do not want to see that. You know, the money is not the issue for me, and the money's off the table for me. I'm a volunteer. Been doing it for, like I said, thirty, forty years. And money means nothing to me, I mean, now. But obviously, our full-time people that are, made it their careers, made it their livelihood, it is an issue for them. And I understand that, you know, the county has some budget restraints. We all understand that. I'm a taxpayer also. So those things, I understand you need to take that into consideration too. But, the, the main point being, is we really need, the crew needs somebody that we can respect, and that we can follow their lead, somebody that has really good training skills for us, which I'm not gonna beat around the bush. The gentleman that is our interim director right now is very good in those fields. He's, we've had more training in the last year since he's been around than we've had at AGES. Okay, and good training, good, good classes. We're learning things. New stuff that's coming down the pipe for us all the time. And his training is.
So you're saying there's been an increase in quality assurance?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Since the last interim director to the new?
Right, and I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus.
No, but that's what you're saying, is you've had a lot of.
He has. He's done, he's done a very good job with training, with keeping up on, you know, taking care of outdated meds and things that are on the trucks that need to be, you know, those all have expiration dates. He's doing a very good job of keeping up on inventory, on equipment, on training. I mean, the crew all gets, as far as the best of my knowledge, everyone gets along with him well. You know, I understand there, you know, there potentially could be a personnel issue there. But that's, you know, I know you're in the process of trying to hire an HR person. Those things can be dealt through HR, you know, if you're upfront about it. And, you know, I, I said, I have eighteen years on the school board, so I, I sit on you guys' side of the table a lot. I've been through issues like this. And we can work through things like that.
You had said you're here to represent the department. Does that mean you're here to represent the volunteers?
Both.
Both what?
Volunteers and, and the, the paid people.
Have you been asked by the paid personnel to come?
We had a meeting, well, we had an actual training, training, training meeting Wednesday night. So the document that was presented to you guys, we put that, I kind of was the instigator of that, okay? I, I said, we need to, because after I talked to all three of you, and I told you, I think we need, we need some input. I believe I told you. I, you know, so we all got together, it worked out well, because we actually had a scheduled meeting that night. And, so, I, so we sat down, put that document together. I, I've talked to, since then, I, you know, I've talked to several other members. I said, hey, I may go to the commission on Monday and to speak. And then they all, you know, gave me their blessing, you know, go ahead if that's your, if that's what you want to do. So, yes, I, you know, I, I don't have anything in writing that says, yes, everyone, other than we signed that document. Everyone that was at the meeting the other night signed that document that was presented to you, guys on Thursday.
We have that listed in our correspondence from the meeting. And I will say, we didn't have a chance to get back to you, but I will say, I appreciate all of the input that you gave. You guys, you had listed some questions that you wanted to ask in the interview. You'd also listed some of the qualifications as part of what may be the job description. And I did, myself, I mean, we all looked at it, but I did myself compare what we have as our job description for that department head to what you guys had suggested. And it's, a lot of it's already in there, maybe in a little bit different wording. But, it was very, yes, and I appreciate the input. It was helpful. And I think that was not, it, it did not go unaddressed. I mean, we definitely looked it over, and I appreciate that.
Now, you know, as I spoke, you know, before, no matter who you hire, it's gotta be somebody that the crew can have respect for.
Absolutely.
And, and that we can trust, that will lead us to the direction that we need to go. And like I said, you know, I've got thirty, forty years, and we've came a long, long, long ways from thirty, forty years ago. I mean, it was throwing in the back of an old ambulance and drive as fast as we could drive, you know? Those days are over. Yeah, you still have to drive fast once in a while, but we do so many more things with EMS anymore than what we used to do. Part of it is because of mandates from the state. Part of it's because of necessity. You know, we're, at best, we're two hours from a major trauma center.
Who tracks the Sylvan volunteer crew as far as their credentials and?
Well, that's all, I mean, we're all part of the legal county EMS, so that's all tracked through.
So we, their credentials here, Don, is that?
You can look it up. You can go on to.
I know it has a Kansas State Board of EMS credentialing, but do we actually keep track of, of our volunteers' credentials?
I agree.
No, we don't. Okay. So does anyone in Sylvan do that for the Sylvan volunteer group?
No, I think our files are all in file. Well, or, but I think we all have a file down in the director's office. We used to have anyway. I mean, we all had a file.
You're saying the department head has kept track of the volunteers? Okay, and are we, have we been paying for updated training? Have we been paying for that through the department for you guys?
As far as our certification? You know, I don't know. I, I recertified at the end of, of this last year, because we recertify every two years. So I, I sent my, a copy of my certification in. I don't know if I ever got paid for it or not. You know, you got any idea?
And I can't look it up.
Yeah, that's fine. And there again, the money is not the real issue for me, okay? I have, I own a business. I get, you know, when I go on a call for an EMS call, I make what, ten, twelve bucks an hour? You know, whoop-de-doo, if I can't make that much money, I lose way more than that, and I leave my, lose my own, leave my own business.
Actually, Mark, we, you don't pay the state anymore.
That's right, you're correct.
The ambulance service has been paying the state, so the state pays for their recertification.
That's right.
And the ambulance service pays the instructor to instruct the class, if that's what your question was.
Yes.
So like, when Brandon's teaching on Wednesday nines, we're paying him for his time to teach normally.
Is that out of our contract line item?
Uh, that's just considered payroll.
It's pay, oh, well, okay, because it's the, but if we were to bring someone else in, would that be contractual?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Sorry, I kind of forgot. We stopped.
And then is there a fee then for each individual cert, recertification, so like every two years?
Every two years. And whoever is up, normally the ambulance director knows who that is, and they send in all the paperwork and all the group training.
Well, it's changed now.
I don't know if that's on the job description.
It, it's, okay, that is changed here in the last couple, all this stuff is all online. And, so, I was, and to be honest with you, Brandon had to help me through this, because I'm an old dog. It's hard to teach old dog new tricks. All this, all of our training requirements are online. And we have to have, it's, we used to, okay, so I have to have eighteen hours. Say I have to have eighteen hours of CEUs a year. So that's thirty. So now I have, instead of every year recertifying, so I have two years to get thirty-six hours. Now, we used to be able to have that in any category of training, as long as it was a, by a certified trainer and had a, a, a number from the Board of EMS that it was approved. It didn't matter if it was, if we were training CPR, vehicle access, whatever. Now they've broken that down into categories, and you have to have so many hours in this category, so many hours in that category, and it's confusing. And we can do a lot of the, we can do a lot of it online. But, it's confusing. I had to have Brandon help me through it a lot, because otherwise I wouldn't have got it done, because I had no clue what I was doing, to be honest with you, as far as the training goes. So, so that, in that regard, you're not talking to the expert about, you need to, you know, if you really want to know all the training requirements and how that all works, I'm not the person you need to be talking to about, excuse me, about that. But, it has changed a lot in the last few years on that regard.
Well, that's something good to know, because I honestly, I don't remember seeing that particular function listed on our job description. So, I will definitely follow up on that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Something that needs to be updated in your job description too, as far as the training part goes.
It says responsible for training, but it doesn't necessarily say keeping the certificate records and making sure that we are paying for either the additional hours if one of our staff members is doing the training, or the contract training.
Wendy was here, she was really good at keeping track of all that for us. I mean, she probably maybe was too good about it. We got, because we, as individuals, we got kind of lax about it. Now Wendy's taking care of that. I don't worry about it, you know? And maybe that's not being responsible for yourself either, letting somebody else worry about it, you know? But, she was very good about it. And like I said, but Brandon really helped me get through it this, this last, end of this last year, because otherwise I, I'd have been lost.
That's good.
So, in that regard. But, like I said, the, the main point that I want to get across is we, we need to have somebody that the crew can respect and will respect, and that we can get along with, and has, you know, obviously the qualifications, but some experience too. Because, just because, you know, we go through training, but very seldom, I mean, do things actually happen in the field the way we train for it. I mean, we try to be prepared for it, but there's so many variables in every call that we go to. It has to be somebody that has had experience riding in the back of that truck, that had experience, you know, with car accidents, gunshot victims, you know, the list goes on and on and on and on. So we, we need somebody that's experienced, and someone that we can trust and respect. And I, I trust you all will do, you know, the right thing there. And that's what the crew wants. The crew wants a good boss. I mean, we, you know, we want somebody that tells us when we need to step it up or improve or whatever. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't think anyone has an issue with that. But it's also gotta have something you can respect. So, if you don't have any further questions for me, I'll get out of here, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Does that letter too, she got again?
Yeah, that was just, I wanted to see if I had the job description in my folder, but I, I think I should have sent it right here, and maybe I'm fine. I'm sorry.
Do you need something, Ron?
I've got enough of time. I don't have anybody else.
I don't think we have anything on the agenda at the moment. We've had a lot of amendments, so please come forward.
Well, I'm writing my bids for the we department.
Oh, okay. Those need, yeah, we'll get those too.
Are you going to do something fairly quick, or thirty days? Do you have any idea?
I assume. I, I don't know.
We are later this year than it has been in the past. I don't necessarily know why. Dan did come in, and I asked him, and he said he was in the process of getting the bids.
You give it to Dan, and he'll, he'll probably accept it.
Do you, you don't open them here?
We can, I mean, yeah, you've brought it to the public meeting, so we'll, we'll make a call.
Yeah, but he usually brings them all to us at once, I mean, you know.
But I don't think that's a sealed bid thing. I think he just calls for pricing, so.
Yeah, he usually shares the prices.
We'll just get a copy and.
And those prices are, are good for at least?
At least thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
At least.
All right.
I'm just gonna mark thirty days down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day.
You do.
Um, I have EMS director job description and ambulance. I think the main change here that was made, let's see. I'll give you one of each, because it, it appears to me that there was a change made during last year. And what happened was, the change was here.
Which is the newest one.
Okay, so this was the first one that I was given in two thousand seventeen.
This one, by now.
This was changed in eighteen. And we did ask for, we did ask for the HR director at the time to go through all the departments, request changes from the department heads, and then apply those changes. So it looks to me like the change that must have been requested internally, comes down here under, on the, on the first one, it says supervises for patient billing, collecting patient fees, receiving money, and bookkeeping. And then on the new one, it just says assists in patient billing. So I'm not sure how we can hire a director that we're asking to assist someone else in the billing process. I really don't agree with that, and I, I've apologized before that I didn't catch that. I think we were relying on the input that we received from the HR who was corresponding with the director at the time. So I really think we need, as the board, need to officially adopt one of these. I would recommend the first one with any necessary changes, and that is entitled. I would recommend the first one with any necessary changes, and that is entitled ambulance service director. Um, and the other one is EMS director, but I do think in the county realm, they refer to it as EMS emergent or. Emergency medical services, so maybe we do want to list that as the heading as far as the position.
But the major changes with, you said.
Is who is responsible for the billing?
Supervising patient billing, collecting patient fees, accepting, receiving money, I guess it should say, it says receptive, but.
Receiting, like, keeping track of the receipts?
Receive, yeah, receiving money and book.
Yeah.
And the other list one doesn't have that, it has responsible for reviewing patient reports.
It actually changed the wording to um assisting in billing, and I just.
Assisting patient bill, well, that does, that's, yeah, very vague on what that means.
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
And currently now we hire a.
It's number thirteen, bullet point thirteen versus one, two, three, four, five.
Currently now we hire a, you know.
Ten, bullet point ten.
Comp company of the processes or billing, right?
We have employed a third-party billing company who receives our information and does the coding. I think the employees are still supposed to code what they're doing into the data network, is that correct, Dawn? They still code what they're doing in or what they've done on the run?
Their ambulance run, and then when it's complete, they do something with it, I don't really know what.
What is that network called, KESMS or K- KEMSYS or?
No, uh, it's, I wanna say it's called M H Trend, what they.
Oh.
Data in or into, but it's like, it's, it's provided through the Kansas Board of EMS.
Okay.
So they build their own report, when they get complete, then the billing company goes in, picks up the run report, and then there's a place where they can change. Build on that, so that the director knows that that claim has been built. If there's anything that's still pending, the director knows there's some kind of issue with that run and it's not ready. And then I think what he's, they've been doing is changing anything that's like a non-transport or considered a fire standby. Or sporting event standby, they they build a run for every one of those people, every time that ambulance leaves the bay for a call, might you say? But if they don't transport anybody, then they call that a closed thing, and then I.
So it's still logged in as when the vehicle is attending an event, but it's not necessarily billable if it's just a stand.
Like when it goes to football game and nothing happens, it comes back, there's no billing on that, right?
But they're still logging it into the data.
Yeah.
And and even if they went there and there was something, that creates a whole new run.
Sure.
So, so if they have, let's just throw a number out there, three hundred and eighty runs last year, they might actually only have three hundred runs that was have patients that is billable.
Billable runs.
They might have eighty that are considered.
Eighty that were, yeah, nothing, no patients.
And I don't know, I'm just.
And they have a code for each one of them, right, that they would enter on, what, and that's how, that's how your billing code.
They have to build a run, run report, so, for example, a very, very long time ago when I did billing. Anytime that helicopter came in and picked up a patient, we billed to transport that patient to the helicopter. At some point in time, that stopped being billed, they weren't even reporting that information or recording that information, now they've gone back to where they're billing it. And they're inputting employee or patient information into that run sheet, now, it may be different than what a normal run is. I don't, I don't really know that side of it, but.
Like you said, anytime that it leaves the facility down here, there should be documentation. Saying it left the facility in one way or another, and it's whether you have patients or not and all this, every time it's.
Now, if they're just going out.
If they're gonna go out, yeah, yeah, if they're gonna change the oil on it, probably not, or something like that, yeah, or whatever, Washington.
When they're going to perform a service.
Yeah, and yeah, a real, a real emergent or a real uh issue, okay.
Is crisis intervention assistance, would that be, um, because it's, it's saying that the. The job description says that the department head provides crisis intervention assistance to personnel, is that basically if there was a counseling service needed?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't necessarily provide it, they coordinate it.
Coordinate it, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna change that word.
Do we also have on here like uh, like the, uh, works for getting grants and stuff?
That's a good.
Because one of our.
Yes, excellent idea.
Interviewees talked about that.
Um, we had talked about a, some, some sort of a spending policy, and I think we had talked about, we're going to exclude necessary supplies. But we've actually been informed in an interview and even by our own acting director. That there's a range, there's a magic number somewhere, five hundred or a thousand dollars as far as. Request, getting them to request approval from us, so do we want to set that? I think that could easily go into the job description, we don't need to have an entire. Policy written out that's separate, I mean, if they're, if they go by the job description when they work, then it's, it's pretty simple, it's a one-page front and back. Absorb this and live by it kind of thing, um, I think we could easily just slip in there, because it says purchases supplies and equipment is necessary. And we could say with approval over seven hundred dollars or something like that, I mean, what number do you feel comfortable with?
I'd say a thousand, really, because that's, that's expensive nowadays, you know?
I'm just gonna give one example, they bought three recliners down there, and they spent quite a bit of money on them, and people were very upset when they heard about that. So we, we know we're excluding medical supplies and things in their department.
They have the, they can budget, they can buy five thousand dollars worth of that without our approval, because that's part of the job.
Right, so we'll just write excluding.
Non-traditional, non-traditional.
No, he had a word for it, uh.
Maybe consumables related to the service?
Yeah.
I, it's probably something more professional, but. Because when they consume it, they need to be in a better place.
Right, immediately, without, yes, we don't need to give them direction on that, so do you want to go with a thousand dollars?
I would move.
Okay, so I'm gonna put purchases supplies and equipment as necessary with approval over one thousand dollars, exception of service-related consumables. I'll give you these notes, Dawn.
That would be great, because I'm not.
Yeah, I would also like to add that they report to the commission, um, there was something worded in there, let me find it.
Should we almost date like a monthly report to?
Says down there provides Board of Commissioners monthly update and department activity.
Well, they got.
Is that on the new one?
I don't know, it's EMS director.
Yeah, that's the new one, okay, so we asked for that to be on there, so we need to transfer that over.
The newer one has the revised date at the bottom.
Yeah, so I want to add that one.
Well, it's on this new one.
Okay, so I'll go back to.
Keep merging to it.
Right, I, what happened was when we asked for this to be revised last year, there were a couple um changes. And one that I don't find as helpful, they changed bullet number thirteen point on the first one into bullet number ten. Bullet point number ten on the second one, so it went from supervises for patient billing, collecting patient fees and receiving the money and bookkeeping. And it changed over to assists in patient billing. I think that is definitely a supervisory role, and even, even no matter how long we keep a third-party billing company. There still needs to be someone responsible at the county level, and I don't believe that belongs in any other department, especially not of another elected official.
I don't, I don't personally feel like you can tell a department that they are responsible for a budget. And not expect them to be responsible for the revenue that's coming into that budget. If they're a supervisor, they're responsible for both, whether they elect it or not.
They're the ones doing, after, they're the ones doing the run, and when it comes in, they know what they did, we don't.
Exactly.
They gotta say we did a run and it.
And they have.
And it billed for this.
They have to be making sure that it's being completed, I mean, I, I can do that, and I, I'm getting blamed for that, and that's fine. I'll take that responsibility, but the remat- the, the fact of the matter is, is I have no idea when the ambulance is going out. Yes, we have a radio that works half the time in our office, but that doesn't mean I'm glued to it, or that I even pay attention to the noise that it's making.
Even that, there's different types of billing for different services, right?
I have no idea.
That's not your job, they gotta.
Not my job, that's not my responsibility, it's not my responsibility to make sure that the employees are doing their portion of the job, that is the supervisor's position. And that billing comes in line with, are they doing, because number one, they can't bill something if the employees aren't doing their job. So it all kind of correlates together, whether somebody wants to take responsibility or not, i- is their responsibility.
Right, and the director of the department is the only one who has direct access to each employee to be able to have that type of communication. We are not going to go down there and ask them, what did you do on this run, and can you show me how to code it? That person overseeing that process should be there on-site regularly, who would be the director. We're not big enough to have a, a director and a billing coordinator and a this and a that, the one person at the central focal point. Needs to take responsibility for all of those things, so I think there's a little bit of merging still that needs to be done here. As far as, you know, them provide, them preparing their own budget.
As long as our next direct, well, yeah, you can't say, I was gonna say as long as our next director knows what we require of them. But if Marissa may leave in five years, and then we, we want to have it in writing what we want to do.
And I think we really need to have this finalized, we have one more interview today before we deliberate on what we've done thus far. And this really, we need to be able to present this to someone professionally and say, these are our expectations, and I think our expectations in the past have been lax. And even if they've been there, they've not been enforced, so it's time to roll that over, just like Mark was here to express. His concern about who we hire, it's not so much a who we hire, we have plenty of qualified applicants, it's what we expect them to do, and then making sure that it gets done. The, this part about um performs general public relations work, you know, I don't even know if that's necessary.
I, I think a way that it is, because I think what they're talking about there is like making sure that the bay. That, that they are susceptible to have schools come in and tour and things like that, promoting themselves, I think is more.
Or go to the school, get a talk or something.
Yeah, it, I, so, and that depends on how much.
Public outreach, I'm gonna word that as public outreach a little bit, or add that in there.
That's what I view that as, is as.
Yeah, but.
I didn't know what that meant.
And having good relationships with your health department in the hospital and.
Everybody.
Yeah, the nursing home once.
Sure.
That is figured out.
Oh, this is on here, overseas continuing education and recertification of department personnel, I would say and funding, we want to make sure that that's being properly funded. I think that's important, I mean, if we're going to expect to have a twenty-four-seven service, we should be funding the credentialing, the updates, the recertification. And we may even want to promote internal growth as far as sending them on to. Get rece- you know, get to their next level of achievement.
Do we do that now, some like EMT wants to be a paramedic, do we pay for the schooling for something like that?
No, we don't, but we have applied for, like, the state of Kansas has a grant that I, if I understand how it works, right? We basically apply for the funding for the students, and then they can utilize it towards, that's basically all of the students.
So we can help them get grants and stuff to do that?
Yes.
There was one employee, I don't remember which one, recently that we had hired, I mean, a year ago or so.
No.
Was that what we were doing, we were, we applied for the grant money, and then they were giving X amount of time before they got put on the payroll?
Um, no, so I'm looking at it as two different subjects, our current employees advancing to be a paramedic, we have never paid for that.
Okay.
Now, have we paid for classes for people in the community to take the EMT class? We apply for a grant for that, we bring it in, that grant helps pay for the instructor, it doesn't pay a hundred percent of the cost. But you do that with the hopes that you get some EMTs out of it, we got one EMT out of that last class. That is participating, that was able to pass the test, the exam, and so with that, then he is required to give us twenty hours of volunteer hours.
Oh, that's, okay.
Per month.
Is that part of the grant cross, is that what they, okay?
Yes, that's part of the grant repayment type thing, and then that, that money, and then the service has to document that. Now, when our, you have to forgive me, because first off, I'm gonna tell you things that. That their certifications is no longer there, but it used to be that we had an EMT, and then they could go to EM, EMTD training, which was a defibrillator. We would pay for that cost for them to do that, and then once they pass the certification, then we would give them an increase for doing that. And then they did an I, so that we had EMTDs and Is, they've now changed all that classification, I have no idea where it's at. But I would say that if you had an EMT who wanted to do the advanced class, that we would probably pay to send them to go do that, you know, pay for the initial class. And then, once they pass their certification, then increase their pay, I don't know, I don't know if they've necessarily even come and asked you that, so. And I know, um, like when Wendy was here, that's when the conversion occurred, so she had to have some classes in order to get everybody, and that's where Mark was talking about. He chose not to do it, so, but I would say that we would be willing to train them if they, they want to be. You've never been willing, the board has never been willing to pay for paramedic school, though.
It's probably expensive, probably.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, and we could, I mean, or anyone could develop some sort of program where, you know, you match their, you know, if they want to pay fifty percent. You pay fifty percent or something, or you pay upon their completion and certification kind of thing, I mean, reimburse them. There are all kinds of ways to support and promote educational growth without necessarily having it be a loss to the county.
And then require them to work here a minimum of one to two years or something a- after we get a degree, because we don't want to educate them with paramedic, and then they just take off to. Somewhere else a month later.
Right, right. Well, and I'm not worried about that part as much right now as definitely clarifying this position, so that we have a better. So we have a better understanding, and so that that person knows exactly their expectations, I mean, I think when you hire someone, they sign their job description, and then they're held to it. You know, if we keep going like this, it's not my responsibility, it's someone else's, you know, that's not going to flow well, um.
Like, you've been here a while, like, years and years ago, and I don't want to know, say, I'm gonna, was the billing done okay then? When Wendy was here, was all the billing done by her?
No.
No?
No.
Went through you?
So when I started for the county, one of my jobs was to bill.
Okay.
At the time, you had a book, and what we were told was you bill anything that's unspecified, so if a patient presented, if the. EMT wrote abdominal pain, we tr- we were called because this person was experiencing abdominal pain, we would go to the book for abdominal pain. And we would code it, whatever it said, which was unspecified.
Okay.
Not the most convenient, because number one, I'm not a medical person, so I really have no idea besides what I was doing. What, and then when Medicare would deny it, then we would send in, we'd have to call the hospital, get the hospital, the doctor to write something up. To say that they required this by ambulance, that they had no other means, or that that was the best form of treatment, we would send it in. Um, protest the claim, basically, or or contest it, and then either we would A, get paid or not get paid. And at that point in time, it becomes the patient's responsibility, your whole goal was to get it to say that it's patient's responsibility, so that if their insurance denied it, you could get money. Because if they say that it's not, that it's your responsibility, then you can't collect your money. So it was a little bit easier then, still a little bit difficult, because we were asked to, to, to bill things that we didn't know what we were. I'm just gonna be honest with you, I didn't know what I was doing, besides I would pick out something that looked good and code, code it. Now, with the change of the I C D nine to ten, you have to be very more, a lot more specific. Like, they want to know, was this because of an accident, was this because of a health-related issue, they want to know, and if your attendants don't get the information. You can't complete the online portion of it to get down to, and they want to know nitty-gritty down to if you. We're just gonna throw this out there, broke a toe, which toe was it that was broke? So the attendant has to specifically say, right side.
Pinted toe.
Yes.
Yes.
And I know I'm oversimplifying it, because if you.
You've done that in healthcare all the way around, I mean, now when you go to the doctor's office, you have to answer sixteen questions.
Explaining it real well, because you're explaining it now, it's so much more specific, and that it makes it more comfortable.
Yes, yes, and so, you know, Deborah had asked Wendy for a new book, and Wendy said, yes, I'll get it for you, but she never did. But they were also supposed to be coding, so we never really worried about it too much. When the next director came in, Sue Vavri came in, Deborah asked her right away, I need a code book. Because number one, she needed to be able to not have to just Google the number that the attendants were saying was the code. Uh, never got a code book, I, I think she has bread, but I'm not really sure if she did or she didn't. And I'm quite honestly, now that I think about it, I should have bought her the darn book and just billed it to the. And quite honestly, now that I think about it, I should've bought her the darn book and just billed it to the ambulance service. But hindsight is twenty-twenty.
Right, right.
But regardless, I don't think even if she'd had a code book, it would've done any good. And when I say the cost of the code book, it's like six hundred to seven hundred and some dollars. It's not like you're talking about a nineteen-dollar book that somebody could get. And it's, the old code book was about this thick and the print was about this small. But I think what she was having to do was Google what.
The codes were.
Yeah.
And they would tell you online, huh?
Yeah, and, and I know that there's more things online than what, cause she showed me the one day, but to be honest with you. I was a little on the overwhelmed side and she was taking care of it, so I didn't really worry about it. Although I probably should've been.
Yeah, with the EMS people, when they go on a run, then they provide you, you and Deb with enough information. Saying, here's the run we had, uh, there was a car wreck and guy broke his arm. They gave you a good description of what happened, so then you knew what to kinda do?
No.
No, they didn't, so.
That's, that's where my employee was struggling.
Yeah, well, they dropped.
And when she sent it back, now when Wendy was there and she sent it back, Wendy would take care of it and get it fixed and then bring the run back.
Okay. But now, when, when that was, but that.
So she just didn't do it.
That handed and, that's therefore we had this gap here.
Yes.
Okay.
What, and, and the one time I told her, I said, I don't care, their job is to code it, to call down there and tell them to get it coded. And, um, she just wouldn't do it and she, I finally asked her why and she said, because you're the bitch all the time. They think you're the F and B. And she says, and I'm tired of it, it's not your fault. I don't mind being that person. You know, does it feel good to have everybody hate you? No, it does not feel good. But I don't mind being the scapegoat. Everybody had a job to do and what I'm trying to say is everybody failed to do their job. Now, whatever that might be. Now, I hear, well, you know, Deborah's the one that said, I'll do all the coding. I, I didn't hear that. If she told somebody that, she didn't say it in front of me.
Regardless, that doesn't make any sense because I, I think the major miscommunication is, we have a separate building, okay? We have an EMS building. Out of that building come the personnel, the equipment and all of the supplies. Whatever happens down there is not necessarily known and privy to anyone outside of the functioning inside that building. So therefore, there has to be a point of contact responsibility and that's what we're establishing. And unfortunately, in the past, it's been very wishy-washy, there's been high turnover and, you know, it's, it needs to be reestablished. And the commission needs to take responsibility for that, not you. You're an elected official, we are elected officials, but we are charged with overseeing other departments. You are not necessarily, in the paperwork aspect of it, you are. And unfortunately, that's where the information crossing comes in, because sometimes you're the only one that knows something and you have to bring it to us. And we can be blamed all we want, saying you should've known, but we are not part of that paperwork process, so thank you for doing that for us. Um, that being said, I think it's very simple. We, we reevaluate this job description and have expectations that come with it. And that's it, you know, that's where you, where you draw the line. Um, one of the things I see on here, it says, provides follow-up to citizens' inquiries in a timely manner. I think that doesn't.
Well, that would be basically for their.
Oh, if their own information, okay, okay, patient, can we call it patient?
Yes.
Patient communication.
Otherwise, I'm not really sure what.
It's probably.
I mean, citizens might ask questions and I just don't know what they are.
No, I think that was referring to patient communication.
Like if you gave, they had picked up somebody and gave a ride to the hospital, then the patient may wanna know what that's gonna cost them or something. That, that's not the case.
Well, the perfect example is, we had someone come in about a billing issue.
Yeah.
If that had been explained to them by the point of contact, that the state law says, X amount of time, new billing run. Then that would've been quen, the, the, the issue would've been quashed at, at the time. Instead, we dealt with it because we were dealing with a roundabout thing.
There was an uncertainty on the, the requirements, requirements of the billing.
And they did call, they did call and ask and he told them that they needed, if there's gonna be any changes to a bill, that it would have to go through you guys. So when she called me, she was calling me to get on the agenda, more or less.
That's fine, that worked, okay. Where does, go ahead.
I, I'm not sure you wanna change that to patient. I think citizens will include a patient. And there may be, I may question them about my neighbor or their response to my neighbor. I may have an inquiry.
But then in that case.
But I will, I would, it's not medical history. It's just the way things are set up, the way things are going. So they need to respond to people that have questions out there in the community, how this service operates.
Patient and citizens. And I know, like Wendy did go to the chamber luncheon and present and speak and answer questions there. And, um, it's more PR sometimes?
Yes, it's, it's strictly PR and you need to, you need to do it.
That's good, I think for the community to know, know that, know what's going on. Cause telling people to see the ambulance and this and that, they don't, they know they go get sick or injured people, I'm taking them to the hospital. But they don't know a lot of the inside. I think it's good to educate people, what's going on.
Well, like.
At least to a degree.
I think it's important for me to say, I don't always know what's going on in that department. I don't always know what's going in another department. So I kinda have a gist of what we have to deal with, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's accurate, so.
Well, you don't know the whole picture maybe, you know, part of it.
Yeah.
But anyway, hopefully we'll, uh, hopefully we'll alleviate this from happening again in the future.
Right.
That's the whole issue here.
Right.
And honestly, if they're gonna have six employees, they have far more time to adequately do this than I have with two.
Yeah, you got twenty things going at one time, I tell you.
So I do have a question. Do you happen to know how many other counties relative to our, you know? What do I wanna say? The dimensions of our county, the scope of our county, how many clerk's offices are doing that kind of, I mean, through the EMS?
Not as many as what used to be. I wanna say Mitchell County Clerk's Office still does the billing.
Yeah, no, they use, delete.
No, yeah, they contract with deleties now.
Yeah, they, they contract, they got into trouble, they got into the same problem we were at.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I'm not sure that there's many. One reason is, is because the change in the codes, because all that information got so specific. That no longer a layman.
Yeah.
Can do that.
You can no longer choose the unspecified.
Yeah, and then, and also, you know, what's it take now? A year and a half or two years to get that coding degree? I mean, it's, it's quite an extensive.
Yeah.
Well, I would say that the clerk has enough responsibility outside of that, that, not that you can't assist with the process. But the commission ultimately needs to ask that department to be responsive to us directly. So I'm gonna say, provides the commission with monthly updates on budget status, department needs and changes. I mean, even this part where it says develops and implements new apartment, department policies as required by federal, state and county agencies. That's a, I would say that comes up to be an essential function and then we need to be told about that. Not that we'll remember all the things announced of it, but.
But so that you know what's happening.
Right.
So that you can be better informed about the department, so what their responsibilities are.
It's not that we know how to do their job, but just that we are being updated on what's going on so that we know that things are happening. I mean, the, the stagnancy thing is questionable. I'll, I will fix this for you and I think.
Okay.
That's most of it, unless you guys had something else you wanted me to address in these two different, they're not super different. But I, I noticed one of the other changes is assumes duties as a scheduled member of the ambulance crew, a minimum of twice per week. Or on a, an as-needed basis. That would be the first one when we were assuming having a full-time director. This other one was changed to assumes duties and being scheduled on the ambulance once per week or on as-needed basis. So I think what we're finding out with our interview process is really we need to work with the director, you know, on how they want to schedule themselves. But I think we are looking at full-time position. Am I, I mean, do we need to, I think we need to establish that too.
Well, I, you know, I, I think we probably do, but I think also, I guess I, one of my concerns is if, that the director does do runs. I, I think it's extremely important that he work with each one of those individuals and, and know what's going on, I guess, is, is my, is my. So I, I think he needs to be on the schedule now. How much? I don't know. You know, is, is it twenty-four hours and sixteen hours of administrative work enough? Or is it sixteen hours of runs and twenty-four hours of administrative work? I don't know.
I think that's where maybe.
But I think.
They rely on their expertise, you know?
I think you rely on them, but I think they've got to, they've got, if we're gonna go to a full-time director, we have got to figure out some way to reduce the cost.
To not pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, either we're going to, we're either, we're going to get rid of some of those overtime hours. Or he's going to, or we're going to have to hire some more part-time so we don't have those hours, you know, but.
Well, and some of that comes with what we're doing. I, I think that's it, we kinda have our basic idea for next week's agenda. Who else were we missing today that couldn't come? Oh, we need Rhonda. We need to do.
Yeah, we were gonna get Rhonda back, but we got busy.
Right, so let's do, um, if that's twelve, twelve-thirty, let's put Rhonda on the agenda. We'll, we'll need fifteen minutes for ourselves and then we'll need her to come in, so don't put her until one.
Okay.
Does that make sense? If we have.
At one.
Mm-hmm, yeah, if you put her at one, then we know we have her coming at one and we'll have to discuss that beforehand. Or push it back maybe half an hour, but that should be fine. Anything else you can think of that we need on the agenda?
I can think of right now.
How about if I bring this ambulance service director, um, job description back with my edits and then you can.
That would be good, or if you wanna leave that, I can edit and then email it out to you guys. I, but I can make a photocopy, so you have your original.
That's fine, I mean, there's a lot of kinda cut and scribble on there, but.
I think I did.
Can you email me a, can you email me a version that I can edit?
Yes, I emailed you the PDF, did I? So I will email you a word.
Yeah, if you do that, then I'll do that and email it back to you and then that'd be great.
And you want the old one?
I want the new one. I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I want the old one. You're right, I'm going to take what we wanted kept in the new one and put it back in the old one and then I'll send it back to you.
Okay. Yeah, I just cannot give it to open them here today, so.
That's fine, that'll be, it'll be easier for me to do it anyhow because I can read my writing and arrows. Okay, if there's nothing, oh, and we need to, the HR. Let's, I, I think we need to stay next week, so let's go ahead and put one.
I can stay later.
Okay, let's go ahead and do.
Aljo has to go.
That's, he'll just have to, because we can't keep avoiding this either, we have several applications.
We gotta, we gotta deal with it, you know, we got a lot of business, we gotta do that.
Right, we're gonna choose, yeah. So we have eleven applicants. Let's, um, let's go ahead and do what we did last time and each individually choose. But then I still think we need to schedule a discussion so that we can choose an interview time.
Do what we did, three out of all, or?
Yeah, let's try that. I, actually, I think what Dawn said was Aljo had list, he made a list from top to bottom, so if we all do that.
We can do that, or, who we ran.
Then whatever crossovers happen, we choose, she chooses, and then we'll just bump down to the next choice.
I looked at them at home too, so I got an idea ready.
And then next week, we can still at least discuss when we're gonna schedule interviews and whatnot. Okay, I think that covers mostly priorities anyhow.
Okay, we will call Aljo, who knows?
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting until it would be, what date are we on?
Today's the first.
I haven't flipped mine.
April Fool's Day. Did you hear I won the lottery? I won a billion bucks, did you hear that? Oh, April Fool's. That did work very well, didn't it?
Oh, really?
You didn't blame me, did you?
Okay, so it'll be, we are adjourning until Monday, April eighth at ten AM in the basement meeting room of the courthouse. Thank you.